I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all those serving across the world.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Once again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board of February 6, 2019. To my left, we have Robert Anzalone, Sandra Caput Leon, Chris Gerver, Rich Catagio. Our board members, Gail Nogal, our secretary. Over to the far right, we have Rick Golden, our attorney, Dennis Lindsey, our engineer, and Jonathan Lockman. Sorry, Jonathan, I was our planner. I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, have we had a chance to review the Village Planning Board meetings of January 16th? If so, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For those of you who are the audience and who may have been here for item number five, which is the Silverstein Corporate Drive application, the applicant has informed us that they would like to withdraw the attendance tonight and would like to be placed on the next available agenda. So, number five, Silverstein at Corporate Drive will not be on or heard tonight. Okay, with that being said, first item on the agenda is Open Space Conservancy, public hearing for proposed subdivision of property for the purpose of water supply development by the Village of Woodbury located off State Route 32 near the intersection of Troutbrook Road and Highland Mills. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 203, block 1, lot 11.2. The notice was published in the record on Friday, February 13, and it says, notice is hereby given that the Village of Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, February 6, 2019, at Woodbury Village Hall, 455 Route 32, Highland Mills, New York, on the matter of the application, the Open Space Conservancy for a proposed subdivision of property for the purpose of water supply development by the Village of Woodbury located off State Route 32 near the intersection of Troutbrook Road and Highland Mills. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 203, block 1, lot 11.2. Hello, Dennis.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. This is the application that we talked about last time. It's a property that is north of Troutbrook Road and east of Route 32. It's the property that formed a portion of the Legacy Ridge application a number of years back. It was owned by Chinia. That application never came to fruition, and it was sold to the Open Space Institute or donated to this Open Space Institute. In any event, it's in their ownership now. They came to the village a number of months ago, probably close to a year ago now, and said that they wanted to donate the land to the New York State Parks. They have taken some properties that don't particularly meet their interest and are selling those off, and in this particular case, they've given it to a similar use in the New York State Parks. When they said that to the village, the village said, well, we have a piece of property that the village owns, a circular piece over in here with an access way, an easement into it, that's for a well site. But it's a 100-foot radius, that's the minimum amount that the village can own to put a well in under state health regulations. And when we asked if they would be agreeable to donate most of the parcel to the New York State Parks, but reserve a portion and give it to the Village of Woodbury, they agreed. But the agreement was predicated, or was, requires that the village proceed with getting a subdivision so that it can be filed and they can carve off this piece. What it will do is create a new lot, lot number one, we've labeled it here in this pink tone, and that is 17.594 acres that will be added to the circular piece that the village already owns. That will give the village additional opportunity to locate wells in different locations and maybe multiple wells in this site. They are reserving a parcel here, which is 272 acres, and that is going to be given to the New York State Parks. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Rick, do you have any thoughts or concerns or questions that we need to be addressed on? Board members, any thoughts or concerns? Robert?
No, I think everything's good.
All right. Sandy?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Chris?
Nope.
Rich?
Yeah, just one question. With that parcel, are there any restrictions if the town wants to build a firehouse, town hall, anything?
There's no restrictions, as I recall now. We haven't completed the transfer. We told them it was for a well supply, that was the intent, was for a well supply. We don't want to put anything down there that might contaminate the well supply, so you're not going to see a salt storage or something along those lines down there. Whether it could be a little clearing for a pocket park or something like that, I don't think we have a restriction now, but we have to still work. They agreed to this, giving us this property. I don't know if there'll be any restrictions further on that, but it was intended for well supply.
Okay.
There is one thing I'd like to add. There were two changes on the plan that we submitted previously. The certification of the surveyor, we have a new, I'll give you a copy of this. It's a more detailed certification that it was from an actual survey and the date that it was completed on. We've changed that on the plan. And also, we've noted on here that this new lot was from an actual field survey as well, and that this lot, which is a much larger piece and has a, would be very expensive to re-survey, was done from the lot deed plot.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to have a seat for a moment, see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this. Anyone in the second row who would like to speak on this, please step to the podium, state your name for the record.
Actually, Mr. Lindsey just answered one of my questions, which I appreciate. My comments are really procedural in nature. I was wondering, since the documents were put online Monday, was there anything else received? I'm speaking of by the village board and/or the water superintendent. It may not be necessary. I'm just asking if, you know, they had signed off on it. Again, it may not even be necessary, since the well site was developed quite a while ago and they signed off at that point, but...
The only thing that we received was today from the Orange County Department of Planning, which is local determination. That's the only item that was received.
Okay.
And Dennis's letter, that was tonight, and...
Dennis's letter, that was not the one online, then?
Correct.
It's a new one?
No, it relates to those three changes I just mentioned.
Okay.
The certification for the surveyor and noting that the one deed was from an actual field survey that was completed, and the other one was from a deed plot.
Right, right. I appreciate that.
All right. Well, we'll get to the, well, from our attorney on the fifth, we received a draft resolution and a neg, neg, that we have to...
Thank you.
That's the only other thing.
Okay. No, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I was here at the last meeting when this was first brought up, and while this is, has been in the works for a year, to be honest, personally, I understand it, I believe, but I'm not really comfortable and happy about this rush through suddenly. I mean, and probably on the state's end, not Mr. Lindsey's, you know, but just going forward, I would hope this wouldn't happen again. Again, I appreciate it, though, having 200-plus acres donated to Parkland is certainly a win in my book, so I wouldn't balk about that whatsoever. My question, though, relating to our well site, though, and I appreciate that Mr. Lindsey or, you know, the powers that be were able to get the 17, almost 18 acres for additional exploration. I'm not an engineer, but is that sufficient? Does it restrict us then, once the subdivision is done? You know, would we rather go for a little bit more acreage, to be honest, for, that there's high yield over there, as we all know? So, be silly to restrict it to just 18 and 19 acres. But, just, just don't, I mean, you don't have to answer me.
Two, I'll answer a number of questions. One is, the speed was dictated by the state. I don't know, it's hurry up and wait. We waited for a long time, and then they came back and they said, well, yes, we'd like to donate that property to you, but you need to complete it, and it was in March. They want it completed because they want to effectuate the closure with the state parks to get the property of the state parks. So that's why we had to move it along. On your other question, as far as the land, amount of land, the village didn't want to be piggy. We were getting this for free. We asked for, frankly, a little bit more. We had a, not a subdivision plat like this that was fully surveyed, but we had carved off a larger piece. They looked at it and they said, well, do you really need that? And then they tried to act. This is being given to the village at no cost. So, we accept what we can.
And it's, and it's very good, though. Don't get me wrong, I don't think otherwise, for sure. The only thought, again, somewhat procedural, is whether, and now I did note in your last memo, though, that was a deed filed, or to be filed? I don't know. I haven't looked it up, so I don't know which it is. In your last memo, is, it was...
There will be a...
Just use one of the other ones.
Let's see if I can find it. Yeah, it was a deed, Liberman Page, so I'm guessing it was filed. Is that for the well site?
There will be a deed filed, there'll be subdivision plat will be filed.
Okay. But what's the one in your last memo, then? What's that deed of? It doesn't really say.
Oh, I think that's, I'll take a look. That may be the larger parcel.
Oh, okay. Well, my point, actually, is a long way to get there.
That's the parcel description of the parcel to be dedicated to the Village of Woodbury. That's the 17.94 acres.
Okay, thank you. I'll look up that. But in the resolution, which obviously I haven't seen for obvious reasons, and that's fine, but I wonder if the language in there could be, like this land, I mean, a deed is a deed, but hopefully in perpetuity or whatever language would be rock solid, in other words, that unless the village wants to give it up, it would remain with the village forever, basically. However wording you come up with, is what I'm getting at. So, just a suggestion or hope, anyway.
The board want me to...
Go ahead.
And the village, this is being donated to the village for this particular purpose. And to the extent, I mean, the village, whenever it receives property, it will want to have as much flexibility as possible with this, because you never know what's going to be needed 40, 50, 60 years later. So to the extent that it needs to be restricted in one way or the other because of the grant, it'll be restricted. But to the extent that it's not, then it's in the village, in my opinion, it's in the village's best interest to go ahead and not restrict it any further, so that the village keeps its options open, so that it's not unduly restricted.
Right, right. Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, so thank you. Appreciate the board's time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the second row? Anyone in the third row? Anyone standing or sitting in the back row in the side walls? Anyone else? Board members, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
Okay, I'll rephrase that. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. And you're seconding?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Rick, I know we're supposed to do something.
Negative.
Yes. Even though we did it last time, we have to redo it again, right?
There was...
I just want to make sure, because we did it...
What happened last time is that you made a verbal negative declaration.
Okay.
All right. So what, all you're doing now is looking at the written declaration, making, you're comfortable with that, and that will be the one that will be considered on the final as your negative declaration.
So, board members, the negative declaration that was, in our sense, was via email and also printed with the negative declaration, we'll have to say date, February 6, 2018. You're okay with what that, written here on this negative declaration? If so, do I have a motion to declare a negative declaration?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And all the paperwork put out to the side here, this board would like you to read the resolution of approval, resolution of preliminary and final approval of two-lot subdivision with conditions for Open Space Institute Land Trust, Inc.
Yes.
Okay. On page two, under the history, it says, "Public hearing on this application was convened on February 6, 2019 and closed on the same date. On SECRA, on January 16, 2019, the planning board determined that this application is an unlisted action, assumed lead agency status and issued a negative declaration. A written negative declaration was adopted on February 6, 2019. Under the general municipal law subsection 239 referral, a GML 239 N report from the Orange County Department of Planning was received on February 6, 2019, which recommended a local determination." On page two, where it says, "Resolution of approval, now therefore, the planning board resolves to approve the two-lot subdivision application of the Open Space Institute Land Trust, Inc., as said proposal is described above and upon the conditions outlined below, which are binding upon the Open Space Institute Land Trust, Inc., and any and all successes in interest, including subsequent property owners and the chairperson or her designee is hereby authorized to sign that plat upon satisfaction of those conditions below noted to be conditions precedent to such signing. And the general conditions are usual and customary." With all that being said, do I have...
There was one...
Do you have something to add to that?
The only thing I have to add is that Dennis pointed out that under the property involved on the first page, the acreage thing, 289.6, should be 272.
272 even?
Yeah, it was plus or minus.
Okay.
That reflects the subdivision. That was the original property, this reflects the new subdivision.
All right. I'll offer a motion to accept the resolution of preliminary and final approval of two-lot subdivision with the conditions set forth in, and that one minor change of the acre, total acres involved in the property.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we continue on with the shops of Woodbury, we have one Adam item, which I've sent email out to the board members, and to attorney and to Dennis, in regards to Yonkers, with the resolution of approval that we voted on at last meeting. Rick, would you like to explain to the board members what is going on with this? I left my paperwork home.
Yes. The applicant, through Steve Esposito, had requested a change in the resolution. Initially, there was a question about whether or not that could be done by a field change. My opinion is that it could not be done by a field change, that this was a, that what they wanted changed was actually a specific condition that you had adopted. And so, in order for it to be deleted, in my opinion, that could not be done by either Gary or Dennis, on their authority alone, that it required a decision by this board at an open meeting. There is no particular notice required to be on the agenda for the night, and the agenda, although published ahead of time under the open meetings law and opinions, is simply the proposed agenda, and the agenda can be changed anytime, modified, whatever. And so, there's no problem with adding it on for tonight. The apparent reason for it is that they want to eliminate the restriction that you put on at the request of Dennis, and I'll have him address it in a minute, to go ahead and do soil testing on the soil that was going to be placed on that property. Their position was that generally the site was tested when the state was doing its due diligence and complying with SECRA with respect to that particular project. And the reason that they want to not comply with that condition or have it deleted is that it's, in their opinion, it's unworkable, that in fact, that they take soil from many different locations. It's not a typical, where they're going to one spot, taking it, and then going ahead and depositing it, which makes testing fairly easy. But it's a very dynamic site in which they're taking soil from various different places and then placing it at various places other than the site as well as this site. So, their request was that this was not something that practically they could ever do. The determination of test the soil was discussed at the meeting. Dennis noted the reasons for it. There was no objection at that time made. But apparently, from a practical point of view, when it got back to those performing the work, they felt that it was just not a workable solution to have it tested. So I will turn it over to Dennis as to his recommendation as to if he would delete it, the consequence of that, if anything, and maybe some suggestions on substituted language rather than simply deleting it altogether.
All right. Receiving their request, I took a look into the code and the state regulations. Under Part 360 of the code, of the state regulations... Every time I talk into this, it dies. So, under those regulations, I don't see an obligation test for soils that are used for beneficial use and those that, there are fill materials, it says, generated outside of New York City with no evidence of historical impacts, such as reported spill events or visual or other indication, such as odors of chemical or physical contamination. And the attachments to the letter that requested this cite the DOT's determination. The DOT made similar determinations, and they, they said, "There are no known hazardous waste sites within the project area," and they also said, "No known contaminated soil areas exist within the project area." That may be, I don't know if there was any testing performed, it may simply be their observations, because if you look at the EAF mapper produced by the DEC, they have, they don't have that quite as strong as a language. They say that this area, the digital mapping data are not available or incomplete, refer to EAF workbook. So they don't simply have the information. Under those circumstances, you're not obligated to require it, and I can understand the conditions that they're facing. But if you were to waive that condition, I would recommend that they be required to stop their operations, stop moving the materials if evidence of a contamination is observable. And that would be an odor of petrochemicals, a different coloration of the materials, such that they would think it's, perhaps is contaminated, and at that point, it would have to be tested. That's typically done when you, when you hit a pocket or something like that. And the other thing is that the owner of the site simply be notified and understand that this material is being moved, make sure that the owner is understanding of the conditions of which this material is being moved. And if it those conditions, I think you'd fulfill your obligations.
Robert, your thoughts?
It makes a lot of sense what Dennis said, said. So, I'd be comforted by that.
With, if a contamination was noted that they need stopping, would we waive it? Sandy?
Dennis?
Yeah.
Is there, is there anything that could contaminate the soil that would be, you wouldn't be able to see or smell?
It may possibly, if you say, "if anything," those are the questions you get in an exam that you can't answer in a way. There's always something possibly, but we can't deal in that. I don't think, we don't typically do that in this. It's, there's usually some kind of a, an odor threshold, or a color, or some evidence. For example, if you hit C and D wastes, if they, construction demolition wastes, if they ran into a foundation or something along those lines, that would be an indication that there may be something going on. I think they have plenty of soils to work with that they can skip a spot and move to another spot to move it over. I don't know in their pile that they have accumulated, if they start, they get into a pocket in that, I think they would have to, by the first condition, stop working in that area and move some other soils.
And if, if this was waived and at some later date at that site, soil was found to be contaminated, what liability do we have in that respect?
I'll let Rick speak to the liability issues.
The village wouldn't have any liability, all right? The village doesn't have liability because you've approved a project and something is It's because you touched it. So, that's not a necessary concern. There are things, every time you approve a project, there may be some things that happened afterwards, as a, could, and obviously, it wouldn't have happened if you hadn't approved it. But the village does not have liability simply because you've approved a project. So, there's nothing there that imposes liability because you would change this condition. It's just whether or not you think that it's a reasonable request because of their mechanism, that it's not just taking it from one stockpile and bringing it over to someplace else, and they could go ahead and do that. This fluid operation is something that would make, does raise practical difficulties, as Dennis has recognized. So, as far as liability, it's not a problem.
Okay, but when you say practical difficulties, are you saying that they have to stop each time and test, and then go to the next spot, and before they move it, test for the next spot and test?
Well, I don't think it's going to be that kind of condition. I think there's plenty of material there probably to move that doesn't have any evidence of any, any contamination. It's just, your condition is that if they do spot something, either they move to another spot, or they have it tested. And I, under the proposed condition that I'm recommending, that's, that would be their obligation. Going into the second part of your question concerning liability, I'm not going to go into the liability issue, but that's the reason for the second recommendation to you, to make sure that the owner of the property is aware of this, because when it goes to his property, I think there may be some, something there.
Okay.
If there is something there, it becomes the part, it becomes a problem for the owner, all right? It may also become a problem, depending upon circumstances, of whoever deposited it there. That may or may not happen, it depends upon knowledge and some other things. But the village doesn't have any liability. It would be the owner and possibly others, but not the village.
And the owner is aware, would be aware that if we change this resolution?
Well, I have heard that. Is there anyone who wants to represent? Steve? Steve, if you could state who you are and who you're representing at this moment.
Good evening, Steve Esposito. I represent both Yonkers Contracting and also the shop at Woodbury. We are very familiar with the request. As a matter of fact, that was the one that sort of initiated it at their, Yonkers contacted our office. Just to let the board know also that, you know, we share the same concern that you do. We have executed a memorandum of understanding with the contractor, and, you know, there's stipulations in that agreement. The site, the fill has to be clean, the fill has to come only from 131 ramp, improvement project. If, in fact, that something is detected, that they are obligated to remove it and remediate the site immediately at no cost to the applicant, or to my client, so...
Anything else, Sandy?
No, that's it.
Chris?
Dennis, if we go with your proposed language exchange, we're relying on Yonkers to self-regulate at this point?
I'm guessing that's primarily the case. I don't know if the owner will have a person there, and also, the DOT typically has some inspectors... And also, the DOT typically has some inspectors around, but it's their obligation, yes. It's Yonkers' application.
And if I could, I can just speak to that also. There's a number of involved inspection agencies on site, Yonkers, DOT. DOT has a consultant. There's also a quality control consultant, and we will do periodic inspections.
Anything else, Chris?
Nope.
Rich?
I'm good.
Rick, where do we go from here with the resolution that was approved? What do we do next?
Well, this would be essentially an application for an amended resolution. Typically, you deal with site plans and subdivisions. And when you have requests for amendments or ARB approvals, under all of those situations, you're required to, in the first instance, have a public hearing, and therefore, you need a public hearing for any amendment. That's not the situation here. This was not a site plan. You weren't approving any site plan for Yonkers, and you're not yet approving any site plan for shops at Woodbury. This is a grading approval, fill-in grading approval. There's a specific provision, as we discussed last time, in which you're approving this. That did not require a public hearing then, it does not require a public hearing now. So the only thing you need to do is determine whether or not you modify it. And if you do so, we'll arrive on the language that be in there, in the place instead of the language that's in there now, and then you vote on it, and that's a done deal.
Any other questions from the board? So can we do that?
Okay. Why don't you read it?
Will we be able to do that tonight? Will we have to hold off to the next meeting?
No, you can do it tonight. Like I said, there's no notice requirements, there's no public hearing requirements.
So the resolution of approval that we did at the last meeting, Number Two said, stated, "All soils that are to be deposited upon the project site must be first tested for contamination before being transported and deposited thereon to the satisfaction of the building inspector and/or village engineer. All testings must be recorded and provided to the village building department." So would we be making a motion to strike that condition? And are we going to put anything in its place?
Yes. I would strike that, and then I would add two conditions in its place. One would say, I'm trying to reword this, "Operations shall cease if areas exhibiting characteristics of contaminated soils," parentheses, "i.e. color, comma, odor, comma, C and D materials," close parentheses, "are encountered." And secondly, that a notice be provided to the property owner of this approval. If that's okay, if that's enough. First one I'll repeat. Hopefully, I'll say it the same way.
Operations shall cease?
"Operations shall cease if areas exhibiting characteristics of contaminated soils," parentheses, "i.e. color, comma, odor, comma, C and D materials."
For the record, that's construction and demolition.
Correct. Construction and demolition materials, close parentheses, "are encountered." Period.
Notice would be provided to the property owner of this action.
Dennis, can I just ask you one thing on that? So if Number Two were to take place and they had to cease operations, that area, wherever they're taking, that's possibly contaminated. So that's no longer going to be reported to the building inspector, the village engineer?
I don't know. They'll have to take appropriate actions. That's material they can't move on to this site, dealing with this site. They handle that, whether they truck it out, whether they do something else, but I'm not sure.
Any other thoughts or concerns from board members? With what was just stated, Dennis, with creating, that would be item number? We're going to do a whole new amendment resolution? Correct?
Yeah, I'll be able to do it in a second.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So with those two items that were discussed about the operations shall cease and then notice provided to property owners of this action, that would be an amended resolution? Don't touch that microphone again.
Okay. The only thing I was thinking is you might want to say "cease" in that location, simply because they have many locations to which to remove soils and move soils. I don't know if the, you know, in the beginning, they find a pocket, that means they can stop there and they can take some other soils if they wish.
In that particular location?
But I guess that's what my concern is. So what happens once it's marked as contaminated?
Well, I think that the board's request now is for soils to move from that site to this, not to regulate that site. There are a whole, there are many things that could happen at that site that they're regulated by other requirements. DEC laws, many laws, all right? They'll have to uphold to many criteria. But as far as moving soil from that site, from Exit 131 to this site, you're putting these additional conditions on them.
There's contaminated soil found on the Exit 131 project. It's the New York State DOT and Yonkers' responsibility, and they're the ones being monitored by their certain inspectors. So they would be the ones who would be responsible for the contamination because this board nor the village has anything to do with the Exit 131 in approving the procedures and the processes down there.
Now, I'm just, I guess, and I obviously don't understand the whole thing, but if it's found to be contaminated and that they go to someplace else, then the next truck comes along. I mean, I guess precautions are put in place so that somebody else doesn't come and take from that. Then it's marked as contaminated, and they'll have to do what they have to do.
That would be for the Exit 131 project to take care of that.
Okay.
All right.
I've reworded it slightly and added something that may make you feel more comfortable. I think in appropriate, we would take away specific condition Number Two and in its place have a new specific condition Number Two. It says, "If areas exhibiting characteristics of contaminated soil, color, odor, C and D materials, are encountered, operations shall cease at that location and the area identified. Upon encountering such materials, notice would be provided to the property owner, the DEC, and the village building department."
Board members, you're okay with the rephrasing of all that by our attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
With that being said, do we have a motion to accept the amendment, the resolution for, just bear with me. Amendment approval, resolution of approval with conditions, fill-in grading authorization for Yonkers Contracting, Inc. I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm in, eh?
You're, a no?
Yep.
Okay. So we have four yes, one no. And I guess, once the, I guess we should have amended that to say, when that is prepared, have me sign the resolution. That just goes without saying.
Right.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is Shops at Woodbury. Review additional documents submitted for a mixed-use development to include retail stores, restaurants, and a hotel. Said property is located at the intersection of Route 32 and Losi Lane and is unknown and is known on the Village of River tax maps as Section 225 Block 1, Lots 3, 4.1, and 3, 4.2. Dennis, do you need to map them up here?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Dominic Cradisco from the Law Firm of Drake Lobe, here on behalf of the Shops at Woodbury. When we last appeared before you, you asked for some additional information as to how the current project compares to the previously approved Cabela's project for this site. We have our whole team with us here again tonight. We have John Canning from Lee Horn, as well as Kevin Van Heist and Steve Esposito. And so what we'd like to do is walk you through the additional materials that we submitted to address any concerns that you may have had.
If I just may interrupt, just for the record, on January 15th, from the Village of Harriman, a letter received from Mayor Welly. Dear Maria, I've met with representatives from the Shops at Woodbury regarding water supply for their project. Although we have only had preliminary discussion, it is anticipated that the Village of Harriman will provide water for this project. Just wanted to note that for the record. Good. On January 4th, January 4th, notice of change of secret type in was submitted to the agency, Village of River Plating Board, project sponsored, Shops at Woodbury. And that was dated January 4th. Now you may continue.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you for your time this evening. When we were here last, you had some--
You can take that out and hold it. There you go.
When we were here last, you had some questions regarding traffic and parking. And we submitted, I believe, on January 14th, a memo that explained in detail the additional information that we provided. I'd just briefly like to go through the questions that you had to make sure that I was clear in the answers that I provided. One of the questions was, "How will this project be parked if the hotel does not materialize?" Because obviously, the hotel is still a matter. That's before the village trustees as to the use. So the hotel, if it does not materialize, there's an area on the west of the site that would be built. We demonstrated where the parking would be. Dennis, it's your curse. With removing the hotel, we would provide parking?
I'm going to give you the good one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
By eliminating the hotel, parking deficit would be reduced from 67, which is proposed, the proposed deficit, to 26. So it would actually be a net benefit from a parking perspective. On the issue of parking, I really can't emphasize enough that the code that you have requires us to provide the maximum amount of parking for a hotel, a fast food restaurant, a quality restaurant, a convenience restaurant, and retail, all at the same time. When in practicality, hotels peak at night, retail peaks in the day, restaurant peaks in the evening. So the code is impractical from that perspective. We're confident that we will have enough parking, but not only, if there is not enough parking, it's not going to be an issue because this development is not a regional destination. When it was approved as Cabela's, people drive to Cabela's from 10, 15 miles away. That's their reason for going there. So when they get there, they want to park and do whatever they're going to buy. This development would be retail, fast food. So if there's a parking issue and I want to go to the fast food, I'll either go to the drive-thru or not go there at all because I'm from the area, I can go somewhere else. So from our perspective, we have enough parking, but even if we don't have enough parking, we have enough parking. There was a question as to how much traffic would be generated by the drive-throughs. So we indicated that the largest drive-through, we expect, will generate 56 customers in the peak hour. So that would be 56 in and 56 out. But fast food, a lot of it is convenience-based, so we expect that 30 of those customers will be just passing the site on their way home and decide to get dinner. There was a question as to how the driveway will function, a single driveway. So I just pointed out that the driveway for the Shops at Woodbury across the street, which I believe is twice the size of the proposed development, is a single driveway, and it works quite well. We looked at the capacity analysis, which indicates that the driveway would be operating at about 2/3 of capacity in 2030 with the development at this subject site. Your traffic consultant asked that we sort of demonstrate the movements that would occur and how the new interchange would operate with the intersections in the area. So we prepared this graphic. Basically, obviously, this is 17, the Quickway, and it turns onto 17 Avril Avenue. At the interchange, you'll have two signalized intersections. There's also a signalized intersection up here when you come off the roundabouts. There'll be a signalized intersection at this side driveway, there's a signal there today. A signalized intersection at the off-ramp from Route 6, there's a signal there today. And a signalized intersection at Larkin Drive and the on-ramp to Route 6, eastbound, there's a signal there today. So the beauty of this interchange is it only takes two phases. So traffic is either moving in one direction or the other direction. So the first direction is the southbound direction. So you'll have a green light going through here, going through this signal, going through this signal, and carrying on down through the corridor. While you have these movements going, you'll also have the right turn movement going to go westbound on 17. You'll also have the left turn movement go eastbound on 17 to the thruway. And at the same time, you'll have the right turn movement coming off of the thruway, heading north. And also, at the same time, you'll have the left turn coming off of 17, eastbound, and that will come to a stop. There's like three lanes here, so this lane will turn into three lanes, and these guys will stop here while all of these other movements go. So that's basically half of the movements at the interchange. Once that movement is finished, the northbound direction will go. So you'll get the northbound through this signal, through this signal, and on up 32. While that's going, you'll be making the right turn to go eastbound to the thruway. You'll be making the left turn to go westbound on 17. You'll be making the right turn off of 17 to go south, and you'll be making the left turn off the thruway, similar to the situation here. They'll be turning into three lanes to a stop condition. What this does is it eliminates basically the time that you need right now for this ramp to go because these guys have to make a left through traffic. So those are the two basic phases. When this phase is going, there will be coordinated phases at the downstream intersections. So initially, when the southbound is going, you'll get Woodbury Shops going, you'll get the left turn onto 6 going. After that, you'll get the left turn into the Shops at Woodbury while you're still going in this direction. After that, there'll probably be a period where it's two-way traffic flow, kind of what it is now. Then you'll switch to the other direction. You'll have left turns into Larkin, left turns into the Shops at Woodbury. And the final phase basically will be out of the Shops at Woodbury, the left and right turns off of 6 westbound, and the left and right turns off of Larkin Drive. You asked to see a plan showing the 203 parking spaces for the Park and Ride. We provided the DOT's plan. We hope that it was clear as to where and how they'd be providing the parking. You questioned whether the shared, there should be, could be shared parking between the Park and Ride and the Shops at Woodbury. There can. Obviously, both parties need to be agreeable to it. It can be beneficial for both. Commuters arrive in the morning, shoppers and restaurants and hotel guests arrive in the evening. So there's a symbiotic relationship that could be had there. The parties are agreeable. You asked, "How much traffic does the Park and Ride generate in the peak hours?" So we did a traffic count, and our surveyors indicated that 41 trips left the Park and Ride facility in the peak hour, in the afternoon. There were none or one arriving in the morning. That's similar to what we had projected previously, but our surveyors did note that the Park and Ride, while full, it's currently being used by a considerable number of Yonkers' contractors' employees. So it gets dark, or it got dark at around 4:30, so a number of those trips were probably construction employees going home. In summary, this project was previously approved for a Cabela's, which is a regional draw, and it was approved without a new interchange. Since then, the state has come in and committed to do the new interchange. Not only will this project generate less traffic than Cabela's, much of it will already be on the street, so it's not going to draw new traffic through the interchange and deplete its capacity as much as Cabela's would. We have, based on our analysis, ample parking from a practical perspective. When parking peaks at this facility later in the afternoon on the weekends, spaces will be available at the Park and Ride. And even if the shops parking peaks in the middle of the morning at over 500 vehicles, it's most likely that it won't be-- it's most likely that it won't be a problem. Because the parking spaces are over 300 feet from the street to begin with, and as I say, many of the uses are convenience-based, and convenience people are not going to fight with Parkers, they'll just find somewhere else to do their shopping. So that was the information that you had requested at our last meeting. We're hopeful that from a consistency perspective under Seeker, we've demonstrated that this application is below all of the thresholds that was previously approved for Cabela's. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have. Thank you.
Hang that hole there. I'm gonna jump over to our traffic consultant before I go to the board members. So, do it a little differently. Jonathan will give you his microphone. I'm not touching this one, so it better work. That's the only good one that he has now. That's a different one in all of these. Where the white mark is underneath in the... No, no. It's the...
Want me to touch?
You see, wherever your finger is, see the little button on the other side?
It's underneath.
It's tucked in the back there. It's crazy.
Green means go.
There you go.
I think a quick summary without getting too detailed in the numbers. And I'll first talk about the interchange because I wanted the board to understand how the interchange is going to operate. What happens is the interchange will operate at whatever level of service it's going to operate in. And then the driveways to the south, be they the one to the, this particular site or to any other site, will operate as servants to that interchange. The thru movements are split between the southbound direction. And as John indicated before, when the traffic is heading south at the driveway, the driveway talking about, Losi driveway, it would be operating at level of service B even during the worst hour. That's the thru traffic. The question last week, are we starting to take reserve away from the thru traffic in the interchange by these developments? And the answer is, yes, you're taking away some, but you're not taking away all of it. The second thing is that the driveways have been designed, and I put that globally, that the minor movements are operating at a worse level of service than the main line. The main line's operating at B because it's carrying most of the traffic. And the turn movements are operating at close to capacity. And the reason you want that is that you want to give as much time as possible to the thru movements, and then just get the left turns in, as many as you have, get them in, don't waste any time. The same thing with the traffic coming out. If there's going to be queuing on the exit movement from the Shops, it's going to occur on-site. So they wait an extra cycle to have no damage to the interchange, so to speak. So we basically agree that the volumes we're talking about are comparable to what we have with Cabela's, that the operation from a timing standpoint is the best you can get, and preference is given to the main line as opposed to the driveways, either the inbound driveway or the outbound driveway. I'll come back to the driveway at the end, but I want to just summarize that. The second one we talked about was the parking. Basically, the parking on this site is roughly 500 spaces. You need more than that, but that's providing 500 spaces. 300 of those spaces are in the retail area, and about 200 of those spaces are by the hotel. So we wanted to make sure that when you did the shared parking analysis, they were taking credit for use of the hotel parking as well as the retail parking by all the users on the site. What we wanted to make sure is that if the hotel does not move forward for whatever reason, that we would be able to have, for the retail development, a portion of those 200 spaces, I think the actual count is like 190, portion of those 200 spaces built to be used by the retail even though the hotel is not open in an operation. So we just want to make sure, and I think you've indicated that, so we would have, if the hotel were not built, instead of 500 spaces on-site, we'd have 400 spaces on-site. So, we wanted to make sure that that also occurred. So we have a safety valve in case the hotel doesn't move forward. The second issue is that the Park and Ride is primarily, fills up in the morning on a weekday, empties out at night. We encouraged some discussion between the applicant and the operator to utilize that area, if need be, during peak, off-peak hours. In other words, if a person pulls in at noon and there's a space available in the Park and Ride lot, it's not going to be used by a Park and Ride company. So, there's no reason why a person from this area couldn't, from the Shops, could not park there. That's more practical. And even if there was no agreement, probably going to park there anyway. Because I would, and most likely, most people in this room, if it was closer to me, I'd park there. In the evening, in the weekends, the lot's empty, so why not use it if you have to? So we encourage that. The one concern we had was the driveway. Now, the way the driveway is designed is that there's no median. When I look across the street, there is a median. The state's changed their policy as to whether or not driveways should have center medians. I may disagree with that policy, but when I'm looking for an approval from the state, they say no median, there's going to be no median. In this particular case, though, because of the closeness of the driveways from the gas station, there is a potential that the gas station exiting the driveway closest to 32 could come out and block the inbound lane. You are turning double left turns in on that lane as well as the right turn. If it blocks it, it's going to block it for some period of time. And therefore, what we're trying to do is to at least put a short median in there to discourage or to stop people from using the driveway to the gas station closest to the highway and use the one furthest away. That's the rationale. And we're also recommending that we carry a driveway to four lanes, all the way to the first peel-off, just past the gas station, which would lead for access into the Park and Ride lot as a right turn and then carry it one lane into the site. We provided a little sketch attached here. It's our recommendation. It shouldn't affect the site. Significantly may cause some buildings to move, but we're talking about a shared park analysis, and even if you move some buildings, you may lose four spaces. So I didn't think four spaces to get a wider driveway would be difficult. I think that's my quick summary, without going into all the detailed numbers, because we can be here all night going through all the numbers. And we still have the same laneage.
Thank you.
That's a quick summary.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could...
Go ahead.
So, obviously, I haven't had the opportunity to review Mr. Collins's letter, but in principle, we have no objection to the suggestions. They seem to be an issue more of the site plan than of Seeker consistency. So we'd like to, you know, work with your consultant and resolve that in the site plan process and focus tonight on the Seeker issues.
You're okay with that? What I have to get, Dominic, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Scott Geiger was supposed to get me the design for this particular intersection across 32. I haven't seen it yet. Would you mind reaching out to Mr. Geiger, see if he can get a copy of the map that the DOT has approved, so we can have it up here and then we can look at it?
You're talking about the entire 131 interchange?
Yeah, if you could. Because he was supposed, yeah, Scott was supposed to send it to me. I know he's been very busy with the project, so that would be probably very helpful to the board members if we had that. And I presume you have it right there, Steve?
You should ask.
Thank you, Steve. Is it the original one that was, is it a copy of what you had up there?
It's basically, the interchange goes from this point here, so beyond here is the driveway to, I think it's the exit from Woodbury Common. So the interchange goes from here to here. So this is the entire interchange. There's a roundabout here that I guess is part of it. And there's actually an important point that I didn't mention, but it might put your minds at ease a little bit. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest non-thru traffic movements in this area are coming off the thruway, making the right into Woodbury Common, and then all those folks going home, coming down 32 and making the left. Is that a fair statement? Not of the thru movements, but of the biggest turning movements in the area.
Especially on weekends, yes.
On weekends, on, you know, Black Friday. So if you look at this, the way this interchange is designed, it's fortunate that Woodbury Common is over here, because here's the two movements, right? There's the southbound movement, and when the southbound is going, which is half the time, the right turn is going towards Woodbury Common. And then the northbound movement, oh, actually, at the same time, the left turn from Woodbury Common is going. So half the time, Woodbury Common is going and going. If this was on the other side, it would be only going into this stopped condition. All right? So if Woodbury Common was on this side, that turns off the thruway would be stopped here. But because it's on this side, that turns off the thruway go for the whole half the time, and they come for the whole half the time. So, I wasn't party to choosing this design, but I can see, based on my knowledge of the area, how it would work with the heavy flow of traffic into the, into Woodbury Commons when they have their busiest shopping periods and the heavy flow out of it. This is basically the entire interchange on this other, which was in our report.
Yeah, I didn't see that map somewhere.
Oh.
We don't have that map. We have all the other little ones with the turning, but we didn't get that one. That's why I was asking.
Oh, you know what? Because we, yeah, we cleared that special tonight, that's why.
Okay.
But you did have this one, right?
We had the, we had the little ones, yes.
The little ones?
Yeah. You had the before and after. I was looking for the, we have the before and after ones.
I believe the full interchange, do you have a copy?
Sure. This is what was submitted with your report.
Yep. So it's everything basically from here...
You gotta talk into the mic.
It's everything from here to here.
Yeah.
And then there's a roundabout here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because Scott was supposed to give me their entire project, not yours.
I'll get you a better, I'll get you a better copy.
Thank you.
I would suggest we just submit copies of the large-scale plans, because to try to read the small-scale plans, you're gonna need a motor vehicle eye test. So, I think that will show, the reason we had the second set of plans done, it shows the interchange, and then it shows the different combinations that occur either to the south, whether the traffic is flowing south or whether the traffic is flowing north. So, there's two separate set of operations. We can make...
You can give it to John, these are traffic.
That's fine. And also that other plan, John. I'll take the plans, have them copied, and give them to the board.
I submit a PDF.
PDF of it, okay.
Did you get these?
I have, I saw, I like large scale.
I know.
The question was asked about, it's a site plan issue. I agree it's a site plan issue. The only concern I had is, from a Seeker issue, I do not want the traffic exiting the gas station to potentially block incoming. That's a safety issue that blocks. So if the state could just agree that they would consider putting a median in the driveway, then we can work out the details.
We will definitely ask the state. I had a look at it. I think we can fit one in. Definitely ask them if we can do it.
Great. And as long as we get an answer to that, affirmative answer to that, and I think they'll see the merit of it, because otherwise, it's going to affect the highway a lot more than it will affect your driveway.
And with that, with the median, as you're going into the gas station, the east driveway should be in only, and the west end of the driveway should be out only, because that would also take the traffic above the median.
But then, but then you're...
For the gas station.
Right. Then you're affecting the gas station, and you're restricting their access. Well, by putting the median in, effectively what you've done is anybody can only come in that driveway, they can't exit, except they want to make a right and go into the Shops. So the fact is, de facto, you're going, you're doing the same thing.
Any other board members with the traffic, while I have the two traffic gentlemen standing here?
I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you just said. So, the traffic exiting the gas station will do what? Make a right, go up and come back down?
The one closest to the highway can, right now, come out and make a left turn very close to the highway, and it doesn't matter today. In the future, it will, because there's going to be queued cars coming out of the Shops. Therefore, if they try to make the left, they're going to be either frustrated or straddle the inbound lane.
Right.
Which, so what we're suggesting is, similar to what happens across the street with that center median, put a center median blocking their exit, so they can't come out and get into that queue.
But he's saying if they make a right-hand turn to go shopping, it would prohibit them from, if I suggested one way in, one way out. So they could come out either driveway to make a right to go up to go shopping. That's what...
But John, Madam Chair, I believe, John, you are saying they'll be able to make a left turn out of the east, the west driveway, the further in one? So if you want to leave the gas station?
All right. Let's have one conversation, please.
Just trying to show them, Maria.
Here's the median.
Right.
This is the exit from the driveway. If this median wasn't here, they could come across and back it up. So by putting it here, they're forced to make a right turn.
So that's what I'm asking. So that's...
So that'll be a right turn in, right?
A right turn to go up and come back around.
Right, but what, they're not, but they're not going to do that. They're going to go over to the other driveway and then just make the exit.
Okay.
That's all they're doing.
Okay.
We're just blocking the driveway closest to, we're recommending restricting by putting a median in.
By putting a median, you're not going to have exit, entrance only, and you're...
But if they did do that, they would go up and then they would pull a U-turn around.
No, but they're not, they're coming out of here. If this is blocked, they're going to come out here.
Sandy, anyone's going to do anything around there, because I've seen it...
Oh, that's what I'm, you know, I...
We can't stop everyone from doing what they're not supposed to do. It happens all over.
If the gas station was part of this application, I'd suggest we move this driveway to here. But it's, they're not, so...
Okay. I mean, this is something that, when you, if you, when you talk to the state, I'm sure they can, when they put curvings in for the gas station and for this intersection, I'm sure they'll take a look at all of that.
Yes.
Okay. Robert, anything else with the traffic?
Yeah, John, would you say like the 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM period is the heaviest at that intersection? With people coming off Route 6, coming home from work, people coming from 17 South, and hungry people going into, you know, the restaurants, and commuters leaving, I mean, can this all be absorbed by what we see here in this plan?
It can.
Yeah, okay. Because it's hard to visualize this right now, the way things are. I know this is supposed to solve.
Well, hey, I was late for this meeting, because I came through, I came over the Bear Mountain tonight. I made a turn, and I couldn't figure what the heavy rain, et cetera. I could not figure a way to get to 32. I wound up on, heading south on 7, on the thruway. Lucky I gave myself enough time, another 30 miles on the call, but so what.
Oh, you didn't, oh, I know what you, that intersection, they need to repaint again.
They have to, my first comment tomorrow is to the state.
Thank you. Anything else, Robert? With the traffic?
If you have Route 6, you know, it's basically one lane coming down. I mean, aren't we going to still have traffic problems someplace along the line? And we're going to, we're going to improve this intersection, obviously. But the things that feed into it haven't been improved.
I've come, I've...
I normally come to only Route 6. Tonight, I was debating in my mind to, because of the problem at the interchange, because of construction, to make a left, use Larkin, take 105 around. I would have avoided the whole issue, I would have saved myself a lot of aggravation, et cetera. And I was kicking myself as I made the turn onto the thruway, and I was in about, look, ready to look for a U-turn. So, I think that intersection will work fine. I think it's a matter of balancing. This is going to take a learning, because basically, you go from driving on the right side to driving on the left side, going through this diverted diamond. So you go from New York to London, back to New York again, so...
If I could ask a slightly different question, because appropriately, we're getting into the weeds on the traffic stuff, because that's a very important issue, and this board needs to make a lot of decisions with respect to that, and the project design in a way that you believe is appropriate. a way that you believe is appropriate. But I just want to back up for a second. What the applicant, I don't need to ask for clarification from Dominic on this, but the, the applicant has basically said, there's already been a seeker done with respect to the prior project. They have submitted a consistency analysis in which they believe that the, from a seeker point of view, significant adverse environmental impacts, that they fall within the conclusions of the prior seeker. It doesn't mean that traffic is all solved, because it's a whole different traffic pattern than what they were talking about previously. But I think what they're asking for the board is, can we make that determination that, from a seeker point of view, that the project is within the impacts and mitigations that were set forth in the prior seeker? And finish, from a seeker point of view, that-
But that does not mean that-
From, importantly, if in fact you were to take that route, and I think that's what the applicant's asking, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If you take that route, that means seeker is completed. Two things with respect to that. So they're not too frightened of that, of saying, oh, no, wait a second, seeker's done now. Does that, what does that do to our review? You still have site plan obligations and powers that include traffic and access with respect to this site. If you believe you're past the point of having the necessary information to make a determination on seeker with respect to all of the study of various off-site intersections and things, and we're down now to how are we going to design the site, given all of that information? That's protected under your site plan, and you can make those determinations. Further, if you think that there is something that comes up later on that changes things, either their plan changes materially, or some other project comes in that changes it materially, you can always reopen seeker and then go, go forward and continue seeker with respect to those changed circumstances. But I think what the applicant is asking is for you to make a determination of significance at this point. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That's correct. We, you know, have been endeavoring to demonstrate to the board that the changes associated with this project compared to the previously approved project are not significant, and in many cases fall underneath thresholds established previously. The only notable one where we are in excess of what was required for Cabela's was in connection with water. And as Chairwoman noted at the beginning of the meeting, we do have a letter from the Village of Harriman saying that they intend to provide the project with water.
Well, it's a little bit more conditional than that, but they, I think it was that they likely thought that they would do that, but they hadn't yet arrived, and I guess you're still negotiating with them.
That's correct. They have to pass me, too.
So I still think that that's an open, with respect to seeker, which is an important item with respect to water. But I think that if you can get past saying that, other than water, that you, a recognition by the board that you are in the seeker studies that were previously done, and that whatever other issues dealing with traffic, for instance, that the board is going to go ahead and just continue to review it under their site plan powers, and make whatever changes they want, such as what John is suggesting now, that there be a change in the design in a way that this board may feel is much more appropriate, you have the power to do that under your site plan powers. You don't have to, once seeker's closed, that's, doesn't mean that you can't make those changes.
That's correct. We're not suggesting that the board, you know, would be abrogated in any way in its powers to review and make changes to the site plan, or require changes to the site plan that it thinks are necessary.
If I could, one thing on water. Water is the supply, and then there's also the reverse, there's wastewater. You're going to increase water supply, that is from Village of Harriman, but the wastewater is, is from Woodbury's reserves. So that will have an impact, and what we've done to others is we've done something on infiltration inflow, so as, and we've looked for contributions to reduce the infiltration inflow such that we can still handle it in our system, in our collection system. That's something we would probably want to address.
Totally understood. I believe also that there was correspondence from the Village of Woodbury Mayor in connection with the ability to serve the project for wastewater as well.
I have not seen that.
I don't remember that.
It was a discussion.
It was, it's probably just a discussion, I don't think it was a, I think it was verbal, not written yet.
You're correct. I'm sorry, I was not, I was not at the meeting. I thought that there was-
No problem.
But speaking of writing, we also received, and it hadn't been mentioned yet, a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office indicating that there was no archaeological concern associated with the property.
So what are you asking the planning board to do at this point, with respect to seeker?
With respect to seeker, we are asking for a determination of consistency with the prior Cabela's approved plan and seeker finding statement. That would enable us to continue on with site plan review before this board, and also importantly, it would enable us to go back to the zoning board appeals, where we have a pending application. That board cannot act, because this is a coordinated review, and so until this board makes a determination, we can't take the project any further before the zoning board appeals.
Okay.
How do you address the fact that, to, I mean, putting traffic aside, because they still have the ability to go ahead and site plan and deal with all the traffic issues that people are talking about now. What about water and wastewater? I mean, aren't they still open items under seeker that need to be resolved before they would have a consistency statement?
There's nothing in the record, you know, indicating that the increase in water usage for this project is going to have a significant adverse impact. And in fact, what we have is, you know, a letter from the Village of Harriman saying that while there's certainly conditions associated with it, that they have the ability to supply this project with water. And I would also assume that the Village of Woodbury would also have, be able to supply, serve the project for sewer. And I would expect that those would be conditions of any approval in any case, right? Because at, at the end, end of the day, you know, even if this project, you know, was approved in its current state, it would have conditions associated with it, including the requirement to go out and solidify those obligations. I think we're at that point here, in the sense that we have acknowledged that we have to go to Harriman for water, we have to go to Woodbury for sewer, and that without those things actually being in hand, the project itself could never be built. But I don't believe that there's significant adverse impact.
Well, there would be if they didn't come to fruition, but if, if in fact, any kind of consistency decision by this board, that the impacts here are within those previously studied, and that such consistency resolution would be conditioned upon the resolution of will-serv agreements by Village of Woodbury and the Village of Harriman, that would then be able to move the project forward and still consider all of the site plan aspects that this board has. So that would be, that's a decision for this board, if you're comfortable with doing that at this time, to move past that. My, it's your ultimate decision. My legal input would be that it would be appropriate at this time for you to do that, that you're protected from making whatever changes that you need. If in fact, the two conditions that we're talking about never come to fruition, that means the project is never going to get approved by you. Or if there's an approval, it's going to be conditioned on those things, and therefore nothing could be built until, no sign, no plans could be signed even, until those things have been done and satisfied that they would be getting municipal water and sewer. So it seems to me it would be appropriate to go ahead and have a motion by the board to say that, with respect to seeker, that the adverse, potential adverse impacts posed by this project are within the potential adverse impacts that were mitigated and determined under the prior seeker analysis for this site. And that would basically conclude seeker on this point, although your job is still a lot to be done with respect to the rest of site plan.
Let's get this moving. I'm going to make a motion with the comments that Rick just made in that eloquent motion that he did for us. So I'm going to make a, I'm going to make that motion. I'll have a second, and then we can open up for discussion. Anyone want a second?
I second it.
Okay. Rich, thoughts, concerns on the motion?
I'm not in a motion, but since I didn't get to speak on the traffic, I'm just picking up what Robert said a little while ago. I'm having a hard time visualizing the traffic impact. You know, looking at Route 32 corridor, new 131, I mean, I, I travel in the morning, the afternoon, and at night, and it's congested now. So it's hard for me to conceptualize what it's going to be in the future with all these new applications coming up before us, and even those applications not coming up before us that will have an impact, such as, there's a development on Nenner Road near the Monroe Woodbury High School that have a lot of cars. So I'm just having a hard time conceptualizing, is there going to be congestion relief, or are we going to have congestion, and is Woodbury going to pay for it? What I like to see, we had about, I'm going back five, eight years ago, maybe Dennis can remember, our traffic consultant had a digital display where we had traffic counts, and we could see the pattern digitally. I don't know how we can, I mean, to me, that would be a good representation, to see today's traffic, adding certain applications, certain new developments, what the congestion would look like in a digital display. That would only-
That was done for Woodbury Common, that was Fred Grove, I think, that did, did the work.
Yeah, but to me, it, it was, it was something you could visually see. Here, we're looking at paper numbers, and you can't see it. And my, my, you know, my concern is, are we going to have a parking lot at the end of the day when the new 131 is completed because of all these developments? So I would like to see at some point, and I can't put the burden on this applicant, but I'd like to see at some point a digital display with the current applications and certain large developments in the area, how it may have an impact on 32 and the new 131 interchange. That would relieve me a little bit versus today, it takes me 20 minutes to go through that intersection.
It took, it took me 35 minutes today. I mean, I went down south and came back north, so.
Yeah, but I travel every day.
Yeah, right.
So I'm saying, I'm having a hard time looking at paper versus something-
I understand, I understand, because this is an unusual design, this, for what they call a diverted diamond. What you're talking about is a simulation, a visual simulation?
Yes, yes.
And, and in fact, we just finished a simulation for a project like this down in Texas, with significantly heavier volumes. But leaving that, leaving that aside, we could, if the board wants, and maybe if the applicant wants to cooperate, do, you know, get past this hurdle, initial hurdle, and then during the site plan, develop this model that will basically show you how the traffic will flow. Really, because of the diverted diamond, it's almost like, that's, this section of highway will operate like two separate, there'll be the, I'll call it the north side, where you have Woodbury Commons, and then you'll have the south side, where you'll have the shops, and you'll have Lock and Drive, and you'll have all that other, Route 6. And the reason is, most of the traffic to and from Woodbury Commons would be never seen in this section of roadway, unless they're coming over through the Bad Mountain, Route 6. Other than that, they're going to be seen getting onto the throughway, getting off the throughway, and going towards the north, they're never going to the south. But I think the simulation will show you that, and show the volume of traffic for different time periods. So if the applicant is willing to do it as part of, during the site plan process, to do some kind of simulation, which we have all the data for, and then just see what we can get, so we can see it. And then we can use that as a base to add on to other projects as they come onboard.
Yeah, again, I don't think the total burden should be upon this application. I'm saying we have several applications before us that have impacts on 32.
We have one right across the street also.
We have several. And we have, and we know of others within a mile that are not under our control, that, like I said, our Nenner Road is a large development. That's going to have an impact on that intersection. So I'm just saying, you don't know the numbers, but, you know, we read the papers, and I'm concerned, you know, we represent the Village of Woodbury. If we're making a decision tonight, and at the end of the day, that, that new interchange and 32 is a parking lot, you know, we're going to hear about it, this board. So to relieve my mind, I like to see a simulation model, looking at the different factors. And I don't know how we get there, is my point.
All right, Rich?
Yeah?
Let me check my budget tomorrow. Let me check with the village clerk and the mayor, and the board of trustees. Let me have a conversation with them. I want to see what's, because we, as a board, need to see all the, the area. Let me work on that, let me reach out, and I'll have an answer hopefully in two weeks, and see if I can come up with a solution with John and, and the village board, and what my budget holds, and see if we can work on something. Because, like you said, it should not be incumbent on this applicant to foot the bill for that. But let's leave that for another day, and as Rick said, we can always come back to traffic, because that's an issue that we can look at. But I do understand what you're going at. Anything else?
No.
Other than, Chris?
Um.
We're still on the motion. Any other, Rich, any other discussion on that motion? Chris?
I'm good. On the motion, I have a concern comparing and contrasting the Cabela's project, environmental impact of this project. Cabela's was a standalone sporting goods store. This is restaurants, cooking, there are different water uses, uses here, different wastewater going to be concerned here. I think they're strikingly two different projects, two different uses of the facilities, and they're going to have, definitely going to have different, different environmental impacts on the quality of life in Woodbury, on water, and on sewage usage.
Okay. Let me just, I mean, they certainly are two different projects, there's no doubt about it. They've provided you with analysis that are making the comparisons between the environmental impacts of those. With respect to water, the, the impact as, when you're dealing, you have a lot of environmental impacts when you're dealing with a project that's going to be taking water from the site, right? Or, or having a package system for septic, say, and what's that going to do to the environment? But if you have municipal water, where that municipality has sufficient resources to go ahead and contract with this one, there really aren't environmental impacts that this board deals with. It's basically a will-serv letter, the same with wastewater. If there's enough capacity, that capacity has already been studied from an environmental point of view to, to be able to be permitted for that amount, and now it's just allocating it to different-